Daughter? Is there a Bible?
Yes, soon as she gets it.
Stephanie forgot to buy it.
Technically, you can swear on the Bible? Or you can...
No, the seat, the seat. Give me the trip seat.
Aye, Rick Colallo. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of supervisor.
And that I will discharge the duties of supervisor.
In Doylestown Township, Bucks County, with fidelity.
In Doylestown Township, Bucks County, with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Can I go back? Now that we have it, I don't want to...
I wanted to check something in here.
Did you say goodnight, Greg?
Next to be sworn in is Ryan Mannion. And Ryan, you may bring up any family members you wish.
Yay! It's so cute.
Husband.
Aye.
Aye, Ryan Mannion.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of supervisor.
And that I will discharge the duties of supervisor.
In Doylestown Township, Bucks County.
In Doylestown Township, Bucks County.
With fidelity.
With fidelity. Thank you. Shaun Twohill. As supervisor.
Aye.
Aye, Shaun Twohill.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of supervisor.
And I will discharge the duties of supervisor.
In Doylestown Township, Bucks County.
In Doylestown Township, Bucks County.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations to all the new supervisors. And next is W. Rodney Stone being sworn in to auditor.
Principal Emeritus.
Want me to hold it for you?
No students, no students?
You want me to come up and hold it for you?
He's retired.
He's retired. That's why I said he's Emeritus.
Well, he pretends he's.
Aye.
Aye, Rodney Stone.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of auditor.
And that I will discharge the duties of auditor.
In Doylestown, Bucks County.
In Doylestown, Bucks County.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Okay, let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, again, welcome to the new supervisors. I think we're all very pleased to have you here. At least I can say that. I'm sure everyone else would agree. It's a good way to start the new year. Any visitors or public comment? Announcements. The Board of Auditors, and good thing he was just sworn in, is going to hold its reorganization meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, January 4th, at 7:00 PM here in the Township Building. The next meeting of the Board of Supervisors is Tuesday, January 17th, at 7:00 PM. We're going to be closed on Monday, January 16th, 2012, on observation of Martin Luther King's birthday, noted in the agenda as CB Care's Martin Luther King Day of Service, which begins 9:00 AM at the First Baptist Church in Doylestown. Christmas tree drop-off. You can do that behind the Township Building anytime between December 26th and February 15th. Obviously, now's the time. Correspondence, Ms. Mason?
Yes, I'd just like to let the board know that I've received letters from all the board regarding choices on health care.
Next item on the agenda is reorganization of the meeting, at which time I will resign as Chair and ask that the solicitors serve as the temporary chairman.
The first item of business is for the board to elect a chairman of the Board of Supervisors for 2012. Are there any nominations amongst the members of the board?
Yes, I'll make a nomination and motion for Barbara Lyons to chair them.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any contraries? I hear none. Congratulations, and I will turn the meeting back to you.
I didn't even have to leave the actual chair. Thank you very much. I appreciate the vote of confidence from my fellow supervisors, and I will endeavor to run the meetings as outlined in our supervisors' responsibilities and the chair's responsibilities. And I welcome any and all comments at any time, and really look forward to participating with you on this board. Next item on the agenda is the election of vice chairman. Are there any nominations for the position of vice chairman?
I nominate Tom Scarborough.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other nominations for vice chairman? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's five and oh. Congratulations, Thomas.
I'd just like to thank you for your support as board, and we'll certainly work hard to keep this place a great place to live and work. Thank you.
Next item is the Director of Public Safety. Any nominations for Director of Public Safety?
I nominate Barbara Lyons.
Is there a second?
Second.
Traditionally, I'm going to just discuss the position of Director of Public Safety kind of follows the chairmanship. So it's not pro forma, but I do appreciate the second. All in favor of the nomination?
Aye.
Next item, approval of the minutes from the special meeting of December 13th, 2011. I believe that was the meeting with the residents of Colonial Heritage.
I would note that Ryan and Shaun can't vote on this. They need to abstain.
Move for approval.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three, and with two extensions. The regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors minutes for December 20th, 2011, looking for a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
Any comments, questions, or concerns, corrections? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All right. Also in your organization reorganization packet are the proposed guidelines for supervisors, public meetings, and the chairperson. We adopt these every year. It outlines the responsibilities of the supervisor and the chairman, and the conduct of meetings in this building, all meetings in this building. I'm looking for an approval to adopt the guidelines for supervisors', public meetings, and chairpersons for 2012. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Are there any questions, or concerns, or considerations in the proposed guidelines? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
We are up to page five of the agenda. Designation of the board's responsibilities for boards and commissions of Doylestown Township. These are our volunteer boards, and we assign... One supervisor is liaison to each board and commission. The liaison position is plainly defined in the outline here as to the designation of the board's responsibilities. The liaison is defined. Please read it and understand what your responsibilities are. For the Agricultural Security Advisory Board, is there someone who would prefer to be that liaison?
I would.
Is there another recommendation or request for that position?
You can do your work until you get to the end.
Let's do it at the end. Shaun Twohill has expressed an interest of being liaison to Agricultural Security Advisory Board. To the Bike and Hike Committee, is there a preference?
I as well.
Okay. Okay, to the Environmental Advisory Board. So is there a supervisor who wishes to be liaison?
I'd like to continue with that.
Okay. Tom Scarborough has indicated an interest to stay as liaison to the Environmental Advisory Board. To the municipal authority, is there a preference amongst the supervisors for that position?
I'll work on that.
Okay. Okay. Rick Colallo has expressed an interest in the municipal authority. Open Space and Farmland Preservation Board, that has been a position I've held as liaison. I'm certainly willing to... Not seeing nobody else, I will stay on as liaison. It's a fun board to be on. Parks and Recreation, is there someone here? One of the supervisors prefer this position?
I would.
I think you maxed out now.
Yeah.
Personnel and Administration, that is a position that somewhat follows the chair, so I would express my interest to remain on Personnel and Administration, unless there's someone else who strongly objects to that. Seeing none, Barbara Lyons is going to have stated preference for Personnel and Administration. For Planning Commission?
Even though I've been doing it for 10 years, if anyone's interested in doing the Planning Commission, I'm open. Hearing none.
Okay. Rick Colallo has indicated interest for Planning Commission. Public Safety, again, this is a position that seems to follow the chair as Director of Public Safety and Personnel and Police Affairs, so I would request that I remain on as that liaison, unless there's somebody else who strongly desires this position. Okay. Public Water and Sewer Advisory Committee.
I'd like to be on that.
Tom, you want to remain as supervisor?
Well, if someone else would like it, I certainly would... I think basically someone else who might...
Is there another?
...come to working with, like, planning might be more astute to handling that than they...
And if I'm going to do the municipal authority, do we kind of tie it together to do both?
Well...
That makes sense.
They are and they aren't, let's put it that way. Municipal Authority is an entity of itself, has its own budget, does everything itself with the water and sewer, works mostly with the county, because the county owns the sewer system. So there is a difference there, basically. But I'll be glad to give it... I think it would work well together.
All right, I'll do that then.
Okay. Rick Colallo has expressed an interest in the Public Water and Sewer Advisory Committee. Roads and Bridges, any interest in Roads and Bridges?
I have interest in that. You know there are going to be a lot of bridges closed in Doylestown Township.
Very controversial.
All right. Ryan Mannion has expressed an interest in the Roads and Bridges Committee. The Regional Aging Task Force. See, Central Bucks Regional Task Force on Aging, I think is the actual name. Anybody interested in that? It would be somebody maybe over the age of 16?
I'm safe.
They meet on Friday mornings, 9 o'clock here. I'm happy to serve in that capacity.
For the record, you're not over 60.
No, I'm not. No, I'm not.
So Barbara Lyons has expressed an interest in serving on the Regional Aging Task Force. Telecommunications Advisory Board.
I would like to keep that.
Anyone else have a burning desire for telecommunications? Seeing none, Tom Scarborough. Traffic Advisory Committee, I have interest in that. Anybody else? Ryan Mannion for the Traffic Advisory Committee. And Ways and Means Committee? Anyone else other than me?
I would take that, again, if you want to get rid of it, that is.
No, I don't really want to get rid of it.
Getting even up the sides, but...
Well, it's one thing where all the board participates in this. You always attend.
I invite you. Let's do it. Okay. If you don't mind, Tom, I have been serving as Ways and Means if I could be designated as liaison, and encourage you to participate as well. Okay, thank you.
Well, I don't want to be throwing your side, but if you're going to be the chairman, the liaison for the board.
Just so you know, all supervisors are welcome to attend any and all meetings of the boards and commissions at any time. I just encourage you to avoid three supervisors at one time, so we get away from a public meeting that had... Just avoid having three supervisors at one time in any meeting. Township... Oh. Let me move all of these boards and commissions, liaison appointments in tandem, all in favor?
Aye.
I need a second.
Second.
Is there a second? Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So everybody knows what they're doing?
No.
Cynthia, you got it all?
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Want me to go over it again?
Yeah, why don't you just run down and make sure?
Agricultural Security Advisory Board Shaun, Bike and Hike Committee Shaun, Environmental Advisory Board Tom, Municipal Authority Rick, Open Space Farmland Barbara Lyons, Parks and Rec Shaun, Personnel Administration Barb, Planning Commission Rick, Public Safety Barb, Public Water and Sewer Advisory Rick, Roads and Bridges Ryan, Task Force on Aging Barb, Telecommunications Tom, Traffic Advisory Ryan, Ways and Means Barb.
Okay, everyone agree?
Yes.
All right, good. No changes. Township appointments for 2012. I think we can...
You can move them all.
Move them all at one time, beginning with Code Enforcement and ending with Water Superintendent. Is there a motion to approve the appointments?
So moved.
For 2012. All in... Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the appointment of residents to various boards and commissions for 2012. It's pretty evident that who of the names of the residents are assigned or volunteer for each board and commission. You will also note that for Agricultural Security Advisory Council, we have one appointment needed. For the Regional Aging Task Force, there are two appointments that we need to fill, so any residents out there for these appointments, please let us know. For Environmental Advisory Council, we need a botanist. You know of anybody. I'm looking at you.
He's already...
He's the ornithologist.
I know, but you could probably work on a botanist.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Be glad to do it.
Okay, thanks, man. For the ornithologist, Ray Hendrick, Sierra, thank you. And I assume you want to continue on?
I'd like very much to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. For the Environmental Advisory Council Shade Tree Commission, we need two appointments. And for... Open Space... Okay, we're good. For Park and Rec, we need one appointment. And Performing Arts Council, we need three. Are all three from Doylestown Township?
Yes.
The Performing Arts Council is a committee of both the township and the borough, so everyone has an appointment. For the, I think, for Public Water Sewer Advisory Committee, we have two appointments needed. And for the Traffic Advisory Committee, we have one appointment needed, and that would be voting district number eight. Okay, so are there any comments to the commission's resident appointments?
Well, can we make a motion to approve everyone who's on the list, and then interview for the ones that we have?
Actually, Mr. Schker, they're already serving in terms, so they're not up yet.
But some of the terms are up, aren't they?
Yeah, the names that are listed, there's terms that are up.
Oh, terms that are up.
Yeah, terms that are up that would like to be reappointed.
Right.
And then you have the vacancies, which Mrs. Lyons indicated. And we have advertised a few times. However, we have more positions than we do residents interested at this time.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the ones whose terms are up to roll over to another term. Is that a good motion?
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, discussion? Calling the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we just voted... Excuse me. Making sure, we voted to reappoint the boards, the residents, the boards and commissions for 2012, including 1 through 19.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
I was going to make a motion that we appoint you as the botanist for the EAC, which has not been on the term, but he's here and he's approved and he's qualified.
Well...
He's already there.
I think, Mr. Hendrick, are you qualified as botanist or ornithologist?
Major in agriculture for four years. Took a lot of the time. I've been doing the transplanting of the wildflowers and some of the native plants, but I don't, you know, it's uncomfortable to have both positions.
I think the committee is set up to have a botanist and an ornithologist. Is that correct? So I think we need to have... Can we have both in one?
You could. I mean, if you can't... We've had this position open for some time.
If you haven't had a chance, I can remember.
Yeah. When Ms. Redco was on the committee, she served in that capacity as well. She had a background in it. It's difficult to find someone with the qualifications.
There's a motion that Ray Hendrick serves the botanist as well.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Can I ask a question now?
Yeah.
I don't know what you wanted to do.
Tom has always been the chairman of the environmental act, and now taking on the Parks and Rec. Who do I answer to? As the ornithologist, botanist, would I go to Parks and Rec or the environmental... Or to the board of supervisors?
The... Yeah, your position is part of the Environmental Advisory Council. And Environmental Advisory Council people and the Park and Rec people talk. And they talk through the staff. So there's always that go back and forth communication.
Questions answered.
Yeah, thank you. Good question. Okay. The 2012 administrative office hours and meeting dates for all the boards and commissions that we've just listed and approved, including zoning hearing board, which is a quasi-judicial board. All of those meetings are posted here. And we've also changed administrative hours. You will note from 8:30 to 5:00 Monday through Thursday. Give folks an opportunity for that extra half hour if they can't get here before 4:30. We're going to try this out for a year. Is there a motion to approve the administrative office hours and meeting dates for 2012?
So moved.
Just note for the agenda itself that next to G, we need to... There's... The number 2012 is missing at the end of that sentence, so we'll just write that in there. Do you see where I'm talking?
Cynthia.
Okay, good, thanks. Is there a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that five and oh? Acceptance of the fire police, number H on the agenda. Chief, do you want to speak to it, or is the member?
Each year, the board is required to appoint the fire police so they can act in their capacity, not only for the fire company, but for us on special occasions. So I would recommend, as listed in my memo to the board.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. That's five and oh. Designation of the depository. Stephanie?
Yes, we always designate any official depository in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. We do all of our banking with local banks that are in that capacity.
Is there a motion to approve the designation of depository?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Five and oh. Appointment for the pension committee. The Mark Wetmore is a uniformed township employee, voting member. Joan Nurse, non-uniformed township employee, voting member. Board of Supervisors are voting members. Stephanie Mason is a secretary, non-voting member. Is there a motion to approve the pension committee?
Make a motion to approve the pension committee?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, certifying delegates to the annual state convention and establishing one voting delegate. Is there a motion to approve or certify? We need one voting delegate to... Is that in that position? Tom, are you interested in serving as a voting delegate? You go every year.
Yes, I do.
And you are still with Bucks County Association of Township officials?
Yes, I am. I'm still a past president and on the executive board, yes.
Anybody else here to serve in this capacity as a voting delegate at the Pennsylvania Association of Township Supervisors Convention? Seeing none, all in favor of the voting delegate is Tom Scarborough?
Aye.
Aye. And then let's vote for the rest of the delegates. Barbara Lyons, Rick Colallo, Tom Scarborough, Ryan Mannion, Shaun Twohill, and Stephanie Mason. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Resolution 1607, an amendment to the fee schedule. Resolution 1607, an amendment to the fee schedule. Everyone had the opportunity to review the fee schedule. Any additions, corrections? I'm looking for a motion to approve the fee schedule for 2012.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any comments, questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 1607, that's a five and oh vote. Resolution 1608, the 2012 compensation for professional services. There's a resolution that must be approved. Is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Setting the current IRS mileage rate effective January 1st, 2012. Is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Designation of the official 2012 Township Holidays, when the Township Building will be closed. In tandem, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five and oh. Police Affairs Committee. For 2011, it is what it says, and for 2012, I would serve as the Director of Public Safety, and we need two Board members nominated to serve as... Also on that committee. Is there a motion? Is there anyone interested?
I'll have to put the names up.
Do we already have this?
You haven't done these yet.
You haven't told the names.
I understand.
I would be glad to take that.
Tom wants to serve?
I'm interested as well.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. There's a motion to approve the Director of Public Safety... Oh, excuse me, the Police Affairs Committee. Barbara Lyons is the Director of Public Safety. Tom Scarborough as a Board Member, and Ryan Mannion a Board Member. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's five and oh. Thank you. Recommend the Treasurer's Bond at 3 million.
This is a recommendation to the Board of Auditors who finally fixed the Treasurer's Bond.
All in favor? Or, excuse me, is there a motion?